Everyone ready? No? All right. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, May April 22nd meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. Please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome back. I hope everyone had a nice holiday weekend and enjoyed themselves. I would like to make notice that we met in executive session preceding this meeting. Everyone you see here on the dais, the exception of Commissioner Abel, who is absent this evening, and we discussed legal matters. Consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like to pull from this evening's consent agenda?
D.
Item D. Anything else? Is there anything the staff would like to pull from consent agenda? Anything the public would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right, may I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through C?
So moved.
May I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor of the consent agenda items A through C, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing. Commissioner Booker, item D.
Item D is a warranty item. I was hoping Bill would be here to go through this expense. He talks about this as a warranty for basically computer services for the new system. My experience with warranties is that it's better to self-insure than to prepay for service within four hours. And my guess is that we could have, rather than spending the $21,000 upfront and handing it to a computer company as a prepayment on service, that we could pay as we needed them. So I wanted to talk about that issue and hear a little bit more details from Bill or Bob if you have somebody else.
Madam President, in Bill's summary, he details it quite a bit of any of the questions you may have. It is for the server that we have. This is three years, so it's a three-year total, so that's why it's $21,000. We have utilized this warranty in the past for a part that had gone on us if we were not under warranty. We don't know when the part would have got here. I believe the part was delivered within a day and we were back up and running, being that the server does house a lot of records and information, especially you look in the Police Department. It is well worth the expense for this warranty.
Well, again, my issue is not the expense as when we spend it. If you hand $21,000 to this company upfront, we can pay, if we need to have a rush order and order something from Japan sent the next day, pay for it then. My guess is that we would save money on the $21,000. That's what my view is. It's like all these warranties, this is where companies make the money on the warranty because they get the money upfront. And my experience is more times than not, it's better not to pay for the warranty.
So then you'd want to self-insure it?
It's self-insure. So if we do have a breakdown, we would be paying the top number, but the goal, the theory is that we wouldn't, we'd still pay less than handing them that much money upfront.
So you'd want to self-insure or take out another insurance policy on the server?
It's basically self-insurance. We just pay whatever the fees are. What you're doing with this warranty is you're prepaying for service. It's a prepayment. It's $21,000 in prepayments so that they will hop to when there's a problem. My view is let's just, we'll pay them to hop to if we need it at the time. So that's what my view is. So it's basically self-insurance.
Madam President, it is paid out $7,000 per year, so it's not $21,000 upfront. It is paid per year, but because of the total amount entering into a three-year agreement, it is not within my approval authority, so that's why it is in front of the board for your approval. And I would recommend that we do this based on reliability and the expertise that we would get with this warranty.
Wait, I thought $7,500 was your...
That's correct.
So...
But at the end, it's the aggregate that it's looked at.
Any other Commissioner comment? All right, may I get a motion? Are you finished, Commissioner Booker?
Wait, three years at $7,500 would be $22,500, right? And this is a $21,000 bill?
He's saying in the aggregate, he can approve $21,375.
But it's per year.
It's broken out over three years.
All right.
Are we good? Okay. Any other comment on this? May I get a motion to approve item D?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2019-36 authorizing the renewal of the three-year Dell warranty service for the township's server hardware at a cost of $21,375 in the aggregate, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to one. Public participation. So first I'd like to welcome the young ladies that are here from Radnor High School from the Radnorite. Thank you very much for being here. So I hope we have some good news for you to report. Public participation, thank you.
Sarah Pillings, 29 Garrett Avenue. I'm wearing my Ready for 100 hat tonight. I wanted to give you an update. We are working, Robin and I are working with Matt Holtman and with suggestions, we're assembling our green team. And it's going along well. We have so far an engineer, two engineers, an HVAC representative of one of the churches. We're looking for one more, someone to represent from the Highland Avenue churches, but we haven't found anyone yet, a student from the high school and two residences. So we're pleased with that. We're also participating in two events, this being Earth Day. We will be, Robin and I will be at the Sustainability Day at Villanova on Wednesday talking about energy, alternative energy sources and carbon footprints. That night in Driscoll Hall, an expert in public health is speaking on climate change and public health, which could be very interesting. And of course, Friday is the March for a Green Future in media. This is an effort to show Delaware County what kind of enthusiasm there is for the environment. There are many groups that are going to be there. There's going to be music. There's going to be face painting for the kids. And I would encourage anyone to come out. It's 6 o'clock at the Borough Hall, followed by a march up and down State Street, ending up at the courthouse. Now Montgomery County has given their seal of approval. They have not passed the Ready for 100 resolution, but they've given their seal of approval. And there are now eight boroughs, townships in southeast Montgomery County that have gone Ready for 100. So now like the Westchester group, they have eight, nine groups who are going to work together with an energy expert. And so that's one of the things we're hoping will happen in Delaware County. But I just wanted you to know, we are continuing to move ahead one step at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate that.
Hi. How are you?
Fine, thanks. How are you?
Good.
Michelle Skolnick from Wayne. And if it's late April, then I'm here to say a few words about the upcoming Carol H. Axelrod Memorial Blood Drive in Radnor Township. This will be our eighth annual blood drive. It's going to take place on Tuesday, May 7th, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. in this room. Over the past seven years, we have had incredible support from the residents of Radnor Township, and they have donated 925 units of blood. What many people don't realize is that every unit of donated blood can be divided into components that can then be given to as many as three different hospital patients who need transfusions, which means that the residents of Radnor and surrounding communities have donated enough blood to save close to 3,000 lives over the past seven years, which is just incredible and says so much about this community. We like to celebrate the donors and everyone who makes the blood drive possible. To that end, as always, we will be offering everyone a gift bag, free entry into prize drawings, and special refreshments. We have the support of some of the members of the Wayne Business Association in providing refreshments and drawing prizes. We also, of course, want to thank all of you and Bob, Jennifer, Jim Doling, the police who make it possible for us to hold a blood drive in this room early in the morning after what is probably going to be a long meeting on May 6th. No matter what meeting it turns out to be, it may be long. As a way of giving back to the community, we always offer what we call our community challenge. For every unit of blood donated on May 7th, we will be making donations to Radnor Fire Company and the Wayne Senior Center. And if the blood drive collection surpasses last year's total of 168 units, those donations will be doubled. So everyone who comes to donate blood will not only be saving lives, but will also be helping to support two very important organizations in our community. The need for blood never goes away. I know this isn't something people always like to be talking about or thinking about, but we're actually heading into a season where the need for blood often increases as regular donors go on vacation and people engage in certain activities that may be a little riskier. Every two seconds, somebody in the United States needs a blood transfusion. And that can be because of anything from accidents to surgery to treatment for cancer or other illnesses. And as someone whose family was so deeply touched by blood donation, I just can't express what a gift it is that a blood donor can give to a hospital patient and his or her family. So with that said, again, May 7th, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. right here in this room, anyone who's interested in making a donation appointment can do so through our website, which is CHABlooddrive.org, or by calling 1-800-RED-CROSS, mentioning sponsor code CHA Memorial. And finally, there are always people who'd like to be involved with the blood drive but aren't able to donate blood themselves. If they look on our website, there is information there about ways to help, and we'd be happy to provide more details. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for all you and your family do with regards to this.
Hello. Good evening. Hello, everyone. Matt Marshall, 228 Walnut Avenue, Wayne. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for their wise and logical recommendation to go forward with the improvements in the WBOD. I think that is well deserved for the township, and I think it's going to only make the experience of going to Wayne even better than it is today. Secondly, I'd like to just comment a little bit. I know you're hearing caucus tonight on both the 145 King of Prussia Road land use application as well as the Jaguar Land Rover expansion. And I'll just go back first 10 years ago, when some of you remember the must and when Biomed sold the site to Penn Medicine. And now we are here 10 years later, and it's all working out well and according to plan. I don't know as much about the Land Rover application, but I think both of them should be very considerate about being good neighbors to Radnor Township. They're both benefiting significantly by these approvals, if they get their approvals. And I think they should think about contributions to the Radnor Enhancement Trust. Bob, is that the name? The trust has been around for a long time, but I heard, I guess recently, it's probably down to maybe tens of thousands of dollars in the trust. And I think at this point where we are in the township and especially the burden on the residents with traffic and increased noise and light, it would really be the right thing for both applicants to think about contributing. And I'll just take you back a year ago when Bob and Public Works and a few of us volunteering, including Valley Forge Military Students, were out cleaning the gateway, cleaning it. Not, you know, we were taking trash and hauling it into the trash trucks because there's nothing else to support that. And I know the township does the best they can in terms of cleaning Route 30 and some of the other areas. But I think it's really incumbent now upon the private-public partnership to beautify those areas. And I'd just like both applicants to think about that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? All right. Well, thank you all. We will move on to appointments to various boards and commissions. We do have one appointment to make this evening, Mr. Rahul Kathori. May I get a motion to approve him for the, to be named to Carfac, please?
So moved.
May I have a second? All those in favor of approving Mr. Kathori, who has recently resigned from zoning hearing board and has interviewed to be part of Carfac, all those in favor of his appointment to... Do we normally have, do you want to have comments?
No.
Do we have comment on personnel?
My apologies.
Okay. Is there any comment? Okay. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Kathori to Carfac, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing. Congratulations, Mr. Kathori, and thank you for your service. I will go ahead and announce this evening that we do still have some vacancies to our various boards and commissions. We have one vacancy on the Board of Health. We now have five vacancies on the Carfac Citizens Audit Review and Financial Advisory Committee, one vacancy for the Code Appeals Board, and that requires a master electrician, master plumber, or general contractor. We have one vacancy on the Rental Housing Appeals Board, one stormwater, oh, excuse me, four vacancies on the Stormwater Management Advisory Committee, and one vacancy on the zoning hearing board. And I believe that is an alternate seat at this time. So if anyone is interested, anyone here this evening or in the community, we would gladly take your applications. You can get those to Mr. Zankowski, our Township Manager, or to one of the Commissioners, and we'll pass it along. So thank you very much to all those who serve and are considering serving. Moving on to committee reports. Item A, 145 King of Prussia Road Caucus Final Land Development Plan, Brandywine Realty Trust Hotel Office and Parking Structure. Mr. Nercini?
Madam President, so we have tonight here representatives of Brandywine Realty Trust for the other portion of the Penn Med project. So I'll just turn that over to the gentlemen from Panoni and Kaplan Associates.
Great, thank you. Good evening, gentlemen, and welcome.
Thank you. I'm Mark Kaplan, and I represent Brandywine. You know Mike Kissinger, he's our engineer. He's also Penn's engineer. I'll keep this very simple. When the Penn overall project was approved, the entire plan was approved. And I'm really talking at the preliminary approval stage. And there was a footnote or a condition added that when the developer of the remainder of the property came in for approval, we'd have to get another final approval. The theory was, at that time, Penn really did not know exactly what was going to be on the non-Penn part of it. Our plan is virtually identical to the Penn plan. We've been to the Shade Tree Commission. We've been to the Planning Commission. We had the original reviews by Roger and Amy. Mike went and met with them and made whatever changes were necessary, most of which happened to be on the Penn side and not on the Brandywine side, but whatever. We have a very clean review from Amy. Roger basically has one comment with regard to some tweaks to the stormwater management plan that have occurred really since Penn started the construction. And we agree with what Roger has said, that those items will be resolved with our grading plan. Because after we get this approval that we hope you'll give us, we have to submit a grading plan. It's basically the same grading plan as part of the land development plans, and we will then tweak whatever needs to be tweaked. I think that's all of it.
Do you have anything you want to add? No?
No. As Mr. Kaplan stated, you know, we will have to do a detailed stormwater report as part of the grading permit. And that's, I think that will address all of Roger's comments at that time.
Okay. Ms. Nercini, do you have anything you want to add before we...
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Any Commissioner comment here?
Can you go through the tweaks, so-called tweaks, that Roger talked about? What is the issues that Roger wants to have addressed with the stormwater? And what are the issues that the people in the area should be concerned with, the neighbors and the kids and the schools?
Wait a minute. Rich, tell me what you want me to talk about. You want me to talk about the couple of items in Roger's review? Is that what you want me to respond to? I'll be glad to do that.
That's number one. And number two, is any areas of concern for the schools or the neighbors from stormwater issues at this very large site with massive amounts of parking and buildings on it?
Mike, rather than me trying to interpret, here are Roger's two comments. One comment, well, I'll let you do it.
Yeah. Okay. So what occurred, there are three rain gardens inside here in the courtyard. Those rain gardens are slightly different shape than they were previously. That's due to, you know, other construction circumstances. That's note number one that Roger points out, that those areas just need to be rectified when we go to the grading permit. Comment number two...
What do you mean, rectified? So the different shape, is it a smaller area, a greater area? So what's the rectification that will be completed with the grading plan?
It's the exact same amount of volume, and that's what we have to show Roger at the next stage. So it's the exact same amount of volume, it's just a different shape.
So it's just that because it's a different shape, you need to show calculations to confirm that it's the same volume within the stormwater areas?
Which is done during the grading permit, correct.
Are there any issues with perk, percolation in these? Were there any failed stormwater perk tests? And is there, what's the groundwater recharge areas if we have them?
Again, so the infiltration has not changed. The infiltration rates that were done during the testing during Penn, none of that has changed. There have been no circumstances out in the construction that have led us to change any of the design in that regard. These areas, which we knew about before, had some rock that would impact the foundations. And so things were massaged for, really for aesthetics and landscaping purposes. It wasn't a, there is no found new risk in any way during these stages. So 2A talks about a proposed underground duck bank that was relocated. Right happens here in the front corner of King of Prussia Road and moves up through this trail. On the previous plan set, it was back here and came up through that vicinity. Working with PICO, PICO preferred the inlets, the manhole spacing to be a certain distance, therefore it moved for that purpose. And Roger notes it because it goes underneath a stormwater pipe, and so the profile needs to be updated.
So is there any increased potential for flooding at that intersection area there as a result of this?
No. The only thing that changed was an electric line, so the flooding, no flooding will occur.
So is there any increased danger of losing power to the school or to the neighborhoods from this relocation or from water infiltration into the duck bank?
Not at all. It is a duck bank that serves Penn and Penn only. So third comment is final approval from the stormwater management plan will be required as part of the grading permit process. That's what Mr. Kaplan referred to, and that's what I've referred to, is that these fine details and everything is, the Radnor Township requires us to give a detailed stormwater report at the time of the grading permit plan. And that's what we intend to do, just like we did with Penn and so on. So that is it. Those are all of Roger's comments. And again, really, nothing of note.
Sounds like there was a lot of massaging and tweaking, I guess, from your description. Can you talk about the egress between these two different sites? Point out the building that we have, the hospital building is on the right-hand side, and then the two big rectangles at the top are the parking structures, I guess. And then where's the hotel and where's the office building? And what's the flow between those?
Wait, wait a minute. I don't want to be disrespectful, but we have a preliminary plan that's approved. We're entitled to an approval if our plan, our final plan, is in compliance with the preliminary plan. I really do not want to get into debating the propriety of this development. If you want Mike to show you where the hotel and where the office building is, that's fine. Be glad to do it. But this plan has been reviewed and reviewed and approved and a zoning change. We both know the history. So the questions I would ask, that you keep them and that they be relevant to whether this plan is any different from the plan that's already been approved.
We do agree. I really don't want you to be disrespectful, so we agree on that. Again, this is caucus for your final approval, which was a condition from the original preliminary to come back when we have the new, we have the final design. So like to review that and have an opportunity to discuss that. If your view is that you refuse to answer the questions, then you can say, I'm directing my client not to refuse to answer that question on the grounds, whatever grounds you might want to provide.
I didn't say that.
Gentlemen...
I just want to make sure I understand the purpose of the discussion.
Again, this is caucus.
Excuse me.
Gentlemen, please. I'm going to ask that Commissioner Booker, if you have a relevant question, please ask it. And Mr. Kaplan, I understand your concern, and I think many of us hear you, but if there are some questions that need to be answered, if we could get those answered as quickly as possible, and then we can move along. This is caucus. You will be back again for the final approval. So let's just try to keep it as quick as possible. Mike, let you answer some of the questions.
Mike, would you, I'm sorry, could you point out on this drawing which building is which and how access is gained?
I'll try to do it over here. The, again, so as I think everyone's well aware, this is the Penn Medicine office building, medical office building with the Penn Medicine garage that connects to it.
It is under construction.
Both under construction.
It is still out of the ground.
Correct. The, this is the proposed office building, proposed hotel.
Wait, you just said that the office building was to the right. You just pointed to the under-construction part as the office.
I said medical office. Penn's medical office is what I said.
That's medical office? That's not a hospital or ambulatory care facility?
Commissioner Booker, please. We're not going to be combative. We all know what that building is.
I'm trying to understand where the office, I want to know where the offices are.
Penn's building, Mr. Booker, whatever label you want to put on them are on the right side of this. They are under construction.
And your part is the new piece, the offices, right?
Excuse me. We are not here about Penn's development. We are here about approval of the development on the left side, or I guess the north side of the property. Mike, point out which building is the office building. That's the office building.
And...
And the hotel is over here, all the way to the north, and the large garage is in the rear or to the east.
And so what is the traffic flow? How does the, is there any traffic flow between the areas here? And how does, and where do they, where's the egress and entering and exiting?
As previously approved, the traffic comes in off of King of Prussia Road and flows along an access point here. It can go through the site, it can come out to the It can go through the site, it can come out to the Septa Drive and back around. Again, all points of egress and ingress that were part of the previous land development approval.
Is there any interaction with the new office building and the hotel and the Penn facility? With any, any traffic, any people?
As, as I just mentioned, and as you're aware, they share this center access point, and then they can turn to the left to use our facility and out on the Septa Road. So, there is no deterioration, there is no way to, no way to stop any folks from this facility going that way or vice versa. This is a shared access point for both facilities.
Is there any vehicular or pedestrian traffic between these three buildings?
Mr. Booker, I think I've said it a couple times. There's the roads that connect via, via cars and sidewalks.
But, but, we expect, we expect that the hotel-
Can you talk to the mic, please?
Sure. We, we, we expect that the hotel, that a substantial number of rooms will be utilized by people who come to Penn over a period of time. So, there will be some interaction, I'm sure, whether it'll be vehicular traffic or it'll be pedestrian traffic, only time is going to tell us that.
So, that's my question. If, what do you anticipate? Would people be walking across from the hotel to the hospital facility, or would they get and actually move in a, in a vehicle, do you think?
I, I don't know. The honest answer is, I don't know. The, they have been developed or designed to be standalone with a shared driveway, but there is no question in any of our minds that a substantial, whatever that means, number of room nights will be rented by people who will be using the Penn facility. But what kind of condition they will be in, whether or not they will be able to just walk, whether they'll be old or young or whatever, I just, I just can't, I can't tell you.
Would it be helpful to put in a specific route for people to go from the hotel to the ambulatory care center? Either out and down around through or, you know, I guess that's a, there's, we're looking at the stormwater plan right here. So, to the right of the hotel, that's underground piping. What, what is that?
That's a, you're right. The thing that looks like a lot of lines going up and down, that's below grade storage. Mike, if I'm right, that's, maybe you've got a better plan, but that's a parking area.
That's parking area.
Yeah, that's-
I mean, I can, I can walk you through, and I don't know, I brought the smaller plan, so I don't know if they can be zoomed in on.
Yes, they can.
But there is a sidewalk from, are you okay if I don't?
Yeah, talk to the mic, please.
There's a sidewalk from this intersection here, which is the shared common point to the office facility that continues to the hotel facility. So, there is a sidewalk that would connect to two facilities through there. Additionally, there's a second access point or sidewalk that runs along the rear of the property and actually also connects into the Septa, the Septa stop as well. So, there are multiple ways to traverse the site on, on foot.
So, it's, it appears that somebody who's at the hotel would park in the hotel parking lot and then would walk on that upper pathway to treatment or whatever is, whatever visiting or whatever they're doing at the, at the hospital and not take an additional car on the road. That's what I'm trying to get to.
That would make sense. That would make sense. I think that would be a primary reason why people would elect to stay at this hotel if they're going to use the Penn facility.
Can you run through the traffic, the required traffic improvements that are required prior to receiving occupancy permit for the site development?
Okay. I think that we've already very clearly assessed all of the traffic requirements, all the traffic upgrades, everything that Penn is going to be doing when we went through the, the plan for the Penn site. Is there anything different?
No.
Okay.
In fact, Amy's memo, the first part of Amy's memo restates all the, I'm sorry. The first part of Amy's memo restates all of the improvements, they're basically off-site improvements that Penn is required to install.
Are there, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kaplan.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say, there's a complete list there.
Okay. Are there any other commissioners that feel they need this to be run through again based on what we heard prior?
Does anybody?
I'm asking if there's consensus of the board if we need the applicants to run through information that we've all already had on multiple occasions. Is there anyone who feels like they need that information?
I believe that there's some differences.
Commissioner Booker, please move on to another question.
So, here's the-
Commissioner Booker, please move on to another question.
I will move on to another question, if you please.
Thank you.
This is a different traffic setup, so two, two issues. Number one, this letter, the required improvement consists of, the final one consists of a statement that says, hold on. Item number seven says partnership with Radnor Township to install a traffic adaptive signal system at the following intersections, and it lists all those intersections. What does the term partnership mean in this context with respect to the occupancy permit? That does not appear to me to say that those traffic adaptive signal and system will be installed prior to the occupancy permit. Is that the case? Or is this required to be in place before the occupancy permit will be issued?
The obligations there are the obligations of Penn as a consequence of the Penn approval. They are not Brandywine's obligation. You have a development agreement, you have approval rate, resolutions that Penn signed on to. I just don't know enough about the nitty-gritty detail to tell you. I know that it is not only an obligation to the township, but it is also an obligation to Brandywine, that Penn do whatever they're required to do at the appropriate times when they have to be installed. Now, I don't want to open up another can of worms, but I think, Mike, you told me a couple of weeks ago that those traffic improvements are out to bid now.
Not, not the adaptive system is based on, the partnership is based on the grant of the township. That's the part.
Oh, so this is, this is the-
And I think it does bear on Brandywine. This is a, it could affect, it looked, sounds to me like this could affect your occupancy permit for your hotel and your office building.
With all due respect, we'll deal with Penn with regard to that. If Penn, if, if we can't get an occupancy permit until they're in, then we'll deal with Penn on that. But I am sure that Penn will comply with its obligations under its approval.
Well, and again, with all due respect, my concern is my neighbors and my constituents traveling through there. This is the only substantial or substantive issue that we were going to have that will help in some mitigate the additional traffic, and I see that it does not appear to me to say that this will be installed prior to your opening. So, I would ask, we, we need to have that resolved. Either they need to have this in before you get occupancy or they don't, and I just need to know the answer to that.
You're, the township made its deal with Penn, and I, it did whatever it did with Penn, and Penn's-
It's not clear to me.
Okay, is there, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, there is. There's another, there's another item.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Perhaps there's, Mr. Zinkowski, is there someone from the staff that could perhaps clear up that issue for us?
I'm not sure if there's really an issue that, that is here that hasn't been covered. I'm not sure if Roger, Amy, Steve, but I know that we went through this in great detail, I don't know how many years ago. We spent a lot of time on this.
So, what's the answer?
Well, the issue is, is we had multiple consultants who studied this and gave their input.
Let me, let me address it. I mean, there is a development agreement with Penn that was part of their approval, so I don't have that with me tonight, but that'll spell out all the improvements, what's been escrowed, what's not been escrowed, and if there's a timing issue in there, that'll spell that out. So, that's, that's what you need to look at, Rich.
Well, again, I, it's not, it's never been clear to me in the development agreement. I think it bears not only on my constituents, but also on this secondary development.
So, since this is only caucus, perhaps we can have for the, for the final, for the final, when they come back, we could have that information.
I think we need to know that. Now, now, here's my next item.
Now, I'm actually going to jump in. We're teleporting to the future and asking questions about occupancy permits for buildings that haven't been built yet and agreements with third parties who aren't present, so I'm going to move to cut off debate on this issue, and we can revisit if we have to.
There's no debate. This is caucus. Now, there's one, one more item. One, one more item, if you please.
I think I have a second.
One more item, if you please.
I believe there's a motion, there's a motion on the floor to cut off-
Are you aware, are you aware-
There's a motion on the floor to cut debate. We have a first, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of ending debate, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
All those opposed? Okay, motion-
It's not, we're not debating. This is caucus. There's no debate. It's an improper motion.
You appear to be debating.
So, so, again, here's my question. Are you aware that the Radnor Township School District is going to be changing the start time for the high school that's across the street?
Commissioner Booker, that vote has-
And moving it from 7:30 to 8:30.
Commissioner Booker, that vote has not happened. That is not until tomorrow evening, so we will have to deal with that if that is the case on final land plan.
Why, why do you not want to talk about this?
Because that is not, you are assuming that vote has not taken place yet.
It's an important issue. Now, this will affect, this will affect the traffic. The people need to understand that instead of 7:30, we had traffic studies for this building that were predicated on it and based on counts that were done at a 7:30 start time. This building across the street with 1,200 students and numerous staff will now be moving an hour back into the more heavily populated rush hours. So, what have we done from a traffic standpoint to review that and to mitigate any changed conditions from a change in start time? And should we not require a new traffic study to be done?
It seems to me that the school district should be the ones studying that matter since they're the ones changing their start time. This is already approved.
This is also irrelevant to the question of whether this design is substantially similar to the previously approved preliminary design. We're so far out of-
It's not. It's, it's not substantially similar because conditions have changed around the facility.
And not for nothing, but the motion to cut off debate already passed.
There's no debate. This is caucus.
Caucus means debate.
Caucus doesn't mean debate. Caucus means a discussion of the relevant issues.
Gentlemen.
Debate is for a specific question.
Gentlemen.
So, so, let it, let, please put in the, in the minutes that this board refuses to address the issue of a changed start time and to the detriment of-
Commissioner Booker, that vote has not occurred yet.
This will affect the Brandywine and Penn, and it will be, it'll affect the school district as well.
Are you seeing into the future that vote has not occurred yet?
I am seeing into the future, yes.
All right.
Yes, I'm seeing into the future.
I did not know you were a she'set setter.
And I, I am, I believe it to be-
Commissioner Booker, that vote has not occurred yet.
And so, when it does occur, then, then-
That vote does not occur to tomorrow evening, and we will have to deal with that if that happens. But that vote has not occurred yet.
So, why don't we prepare for it right now?
Why don't we address it after it occurs? When these nice gentlemen come back for a vote.
And we can collaborate with the school district.
Because we, we need to, because this is caucus, because it'll be final approval at that time.
I'd like to see a Chris.
This is a dereliction of your duty. You should be ashamed, both of you.
This is not a dereliction of my duty, Commissioner Booker.
Dereliction of your duty, and, and when we have problems, this is a massive building. When, when we have people sitting in traffic, when you both sit in traffic, when we have ambulances, when we have people stuck in traffic who need to get to the facility, who can't get there, when we have trucks hitting the bridges, when people, students are crashing into pedestrians and/or other folks going to this facility, there will be no one to blame but this board, yourselves, the township, and Penn for, for failing to address the issues that are of genuine concern.
Duly noted. Thank you, Commissioner Booker.
I move, we move on to item B.
So, I'm going to allow if there's any public comment or any questions that the public has.
May I just ask one question?
Certainly, Mr. Kaplan.
Just make sure you use the mic.
Mike.
Sorry. I just want to make sure in that dialogue that just went back and forth, is there anything that this board wants us to be prepared to address when we come back for final? If, if it's what the Penn deal is, I'm sure that John will give us a copy of that agreement. Other than that, it's all out of our hands, but I don't want to be, I, I don't want to not have whatever it is that, the majority. Thanks, Jack.
Well, I think, John, so you can have the, the information that Commissioner Booker asked for with regards to the, the, the traffic signaling and if that's going to be completed. And I think certainly, you know, Commissioner Booker, I don't think anyone is neglecting your point to the start times for the schools, and we will have to deal with that if that goes through tomorrow evening, but that has not, that vote has not occurred yet.
So, this'll, this'll come back for final plan approval on, on May 20th.
Okay. Mr. Zinkowski, do you have any thoughts with regards to the, if the change in the school times do occur?
May 20th, we'll be back.
I know this is kind of uncharted territory.
Sure. I would just like to thank Brandywine and Penn Medicine for making these improvements and the investment, the investment into the township, because in the previous history, we can go back to where there used to have to be police officers hired, extra duty to try to just handle traffic up there. This, there will be a lot of improvements here from stormwater management, which there was none on the, on the existing old site, for them working along with the township. I appreciate what, what they have done and the investment of the dollars in the Radnor Township to take something that was a huge eyesore in this township and redevelop what was there. It's not taking trees down and doing all kinds of things, the redevelopment into this. I think they should be commended for their efforts here and working along with the township. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Marshall had, speaking of finances, Mr. Marshall had a question with respect to finances. Would applicant care to address that?
One, one item I would suggest is, I'm not sure if the conversation was, is that since the schools are changing time, that the school district should pay for these improvements because they're making the changes? So, I'm not sure if that's what the suggestion was.
No, Mike, that wasn't the question. The question is, what are, what is this board going to do about and addressing a changed condition with the traffic studies?
Well, being that-
In light, in light of that. I guess what, what we're saying is, we will ignore that. That is not our problem if they change the time and-
Technically, it really isn't the township's because they're making the change, so the school district should pay for that.
So, you and this board agree, it's just their problem and the heck with what happens to the people?
We don't have the authority to do this. They have a vested plan. If the traffic patterns change later on after preliminary has been granted.
Again, I agree. So, I hear you. You're saying it's not your problem, it, whatever happens from a change, it's out of the board of commissioners' hands. If, whatever happens to the people, however it affects, whatever, conflagration, it's not our problem.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
I got you. Just make it clear.
Commissioner Booker, please.
I just want to say from my perspective, that is absolutely false. That is not true. The issue is, is I hear the conversation, the schools are changing the time, so you have everyone working under the situation that here's how things are going to happen as schools change this. So, I'm not sure if the suggestion is they should pay for this, for the changes, and there's already a significant investment into here when you look at a traffic signal that is being put in by the high school that never existed there, which is a huge improvement that was, that did not have to go in. I think them working with the township to put the adaptive signal system in is huge for this township. So, I think when you look at all the pros and the cons from this, there are more pros to help ensure safety of students, which is key, and I do commend the school district for working on the original plan and working through that with them. So, you know, I think this is a huge difference, and by no means is there any misrepresentation that the township's not working with them, trying to be business-friendly, pro-business development, but also preserving the waste of taxpayers' dollars, because I think in that case, we would be wasting taxpayers' dollars as we did with multiple studies on the same issue that all came back the same. Thank you.
Penn is a charity, by the way.
All right. Thank you.
Again, it's not a matter of the school district paying anything. It's what is this board going to do? And I hear that we will do nothing. It's not our issue.
Commissioner Booker, that is not true. The vote will occur tomorrow night, and then we will decide if there is something that we need to do in order to address that.
And we don't even know if we're going to have those signalization improvements prior to opening this facility.
Okay. Commissioner Booker, your point has been made, and I believe it will be addressed. Thank you very much. Is there any other, any- Is there any other, any questions from the public for the applicants?
Yeah, the one I pointed out from Mr. Marshall.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify what I had commented on before, and I've been saying it for 10 years, by the way, when I was on the planning commission and then when I took an interim post as a commissioner. I don't care what the amount is. I would like to see voluntary initiation by all the property owners along Route 30 just to maintain the right-of-way and the improvements that the township has already started. So, you could say that it would be a voluntary contribution of cash, or it could be, as I know Villanova's doing, they are contributing professional services. All of these applicants have access to those things. It's up to them to decide what they wanna contribute. I'm just saying, the board has done a good job of getting this going in the Wayne Business Overlay District, and I'd like to just see it continue to the east and hopefully down to Commissioner Farre and Commissioner Nagle's districts. This is the time to do it. The economy's never gonna be better, and there's never gonna be more development in Radnor. So, take the initiative. Whatever the applicant can do to contribute to that, that's what I'm talking about.
Mr. Marshall, would you like for us to take a vote, or how do you suggest we proceed with that?
That's my only recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Thank you very much.
I do think it's a good one. That's a good point.
Is there any other comment?
Madam President?
All right. Yes, Mr. Zinkowski.
Just one more comment. I agree with what Mr. Marshall said. I agree 100%. However, when we give businesses a rough time on things that have already been discussed years and years ago and are non-issues, we kind of turn people off to saying, why would we participate and work with the township when alls we're doing is looking to work with you?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zinkowski. All right. Gentlemen, thank you very much. We appreciate you. We'll see you in a couple weeks. Onto item B.
Commissioner Borowski, would you entertain a motion on my part? And if it gets no second, we'll not move forward with it. The motion would be to require a, to request this week, a contribution to the Radnor Enhancement Trust from Brandywine and/or Penn with respect to this development, which is, none has been agreed to at this point, an amount to be determined later. So, that's the motion.
So, I heard my colleague saying that that was extortion, and he is wrong. That is soliciting a bribe. Totally different thing.
All right.
All right. Let's move on, gentlemen.
It's not, they would agree, it's an agreement.
But both illegal, hold on, but both illegal, right?
All right. Gentlemen, let's move on.
It's not soliciting a bribe, it is a request for entering into an agreement.
I don't think that you have a second on your motion, Commissioner Booker. We will move on to item B.
Make the motion. Let it give them a chance. See if there's a second.
Mr. Marshall made the request. There are applicants here. The applicant can decide whether they wanna do something voluntarily. Does it need to come from this board? Shouldn't come from this board.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Item B, Jaguar Land Rover Main Line Caucus Preliminary Final Land Development Plan. Who do we have? Mr. Canaglia or Mr. Norsini? Are you introducing or...
So, this is Jaguar Land Rover Main Line here for caucus. They have a increase of 2,914 square feet of impervious based on some renovations they're doing. And I will now turn it over to their engineer and attorney.
Thanks. And Steve and I spoke today. I know we have to give you an extension. May 20th is the next meeting? So, we'll give you an extension to May 21st. I'll send a letter to Steve tomorrow. This is a request that's being mandated by Jaguar International for Jaguar dealership on Lancaster Avenue to construct in addition to their building, as well as to make some interior renovations to the site. You'll see here on the plan, this is the area, this is the area being proposed as far as the addition, this area here, as well as this area in this location. It's to the rear of the building, can't be seen from Lancaster Avenue. Just a little bit on brief history, just to familiarize the board with the site. Here's the subject site of the Jaguar dealership. It's across the street from Bryn Mawr Trust. It's next to what I still refer to, I think most of us refer to, is the old Acme Wayne site and a number of strip stores there and the parking in the front. And then back here is the residential Pembroke North condominiums. I believe it's 51 or 54 condominium units, and it's adjacent to the American Legion Post located here. This development goes back to the early 2000s. Actually, it was a predecessor of the WBOD. Because at that time, the applicant, this entire site was a car dealership. And you'll see the parking and the cars were in the front. There was a dealership itself with a building in the rear that extended this entire site. What happened is the then-owner came in, I believe it was actually Lenfest, came in to put an addition on to this building. The township said, hey, wait a minute, maybe we can do something better here. And at that time, the thought was to move the building up front, as well as develop part of this site as residential, which is in fact what happened here. An amendment to zoning code was made back around 2004, 2005, somewhere in that area. The building was placed in the front, parking in the rear, just like the WBOD, residential in the rear, backed by the tracks. And you'll notice also the winding sidewalk here to pull it off Lancaster Avenue to make more pedestrian-friendly type site. And that led to what we have today, which is this particular site, as I believe all you are well familiar with. As I mentioned, the addition would be to the rear of this site. There was a number of items that had to be addressed before we got here tonight. One item was that the review letters from the consultants determined that there was a requirement to proceed to the zoning hearing board regarding parking. Although the number of parking spaces weren't really being reduced, it was being reconfigured. And it was being reconfigured to the point where it's actually the same as it exists today, except for a couple spots. But, there's some stacked parking back here. This stacked parking's not used for customers. It's rarely used for vehicles, for show vehicles, and for vehicles for the repair business when someone comes in for the repair. Mike Smythe, before the planning commission and the zoning hearing board, both testified to the fact that really there's no overlap between the sales business and the repair business, repair business being dropped off in the morning, the sales business really mainly being a Saturday-type business. And he makes special accommodations to make certain the parking is all smooth on this site. It proceeded the zoning hearing board. First, it went to the planning for a recommendation on the zoning. Planning unanimously recommended approval that the zoning board approve it. Zoning board unanimously approved it. We then went back to planning commission for this site itself. Planning commission, again unanimously approved the preliminary final land development plan, which you see here this evening before you. As I mentioned, the real reason for this is being determined by Jaguar International, which requires a configuration of the building itself and in addition to the building. As to the comments, all the comments have either been resolved by the zoning hearing board, they're noted, or we've asked for waivers, or we will comply. Just a couple of them. One item, I believe, was Amy's comment regarding these parking spaces here. The zoning board continued the zoning relief here as to the size of the spaces. Nothing's been changed. These spaces actually continue the way they are today. Also, as I mentioned, these spaces here are now stacked spaces. The zoning code requires that they have access to parking, and as a result, we did require, we did get relief from the zoning hearing board on that issue. Item number three on Roger's comment on page two talks about trees in parking spots. As we mentioned, this is not being changed at all. We did ask, I believe, Brendan, we asked for a waiver on that issue, or we just said it was a continuing nonconformity?
We asked for a waiver. I believe it was gonna be determined by the shade tree if we needed to determine a fee in lieu of instead of the trees.
Yeah, the planning commission recommended, and we've accepted, that shade tree, instead of planting the trees, that a tree in lieu of planting be determined by shade tree, which would be compensated for additional trees throughout the township. The only other one, as I mentioned, most of the items have either been covered by zoning, which was number two in Roger's comments on page two. That was granted by the zoning hearing board. The, and I believe everything else is a will comply, either an existing situation, or we would agree to a fee in lieu to be determined by shade tree or a waiver item. There was one item made by Roger on page four regarding stormwater management, which was not a requirement, but he mentioned that the stormwater management system be located 10 feet from the building foundations. We had mentioned before the planning commission that this was not possible to do due to the volume that we need to comply with the stormwater management system. So, I believe it is closer than 10 feet. Again, it's not a requirement of subdivision or zoning, but it is something that Roger stated that perhaps could be recommended, but just cannot be complied with in this As to Amy's comments, again, they are, they've been noted, they've been covered by zoning, or there has been no change in the existing facility as to how it's going to be complied with.
Commissioner, if I may add, so the applicant doesn't even need to go to shade tree. They're adding trees to the site. They're not taking any down. So, we didn't even have them scheduled to go, and they've already agreed to do the fee in lieu of if required. Just a aside.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Norsini. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Okay.
Okay.
Is there any questions from the public for the applicant? All right. Seeing none. Gentlemen, thank you very much. We'll see you back here in a couple weeks. Okay, onto item C, 309 Midland Avenue, waiver of Section 245-22A, 2C2, Section 245-24A, and Section 245-25A, A, B of the Stormwater Management Ordinance. Mr. Norsini.
Madam President, so, these folks were before us before and were granted a waiver. They have no infiltration on the site. They're here again tonight. They're knocking down an existing garage and basically rebuilding that on top of part of their driveway. So, this, by law, by our code, they need to be before you again. They still need a waiver. The fact that it's on top of our driveway, on top, partly on top of their driveway, we do not give credit for existing impervious being built over, so it's all considered new. Again, they had zero infiltration, if you read the letters, and I'll turn it over to their engineer from here. But, they do need to see you again.
Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Evening. Yeah, glad to be back. Yeah, so, we were here in December 2018. We received a waiver from the minimum volume requirement, stormwater volume requirement. So, in between that time and now, the applicant has decided to move forward with their garage replacement. The garage is in poor condition. They've had a, they've attempted to rehab it and have come to the conclusion with professionals that it's not possible. So, they've decided at this time to replace it. They went through the HARP process, and they received approval from HARP for the replacement of the detached garage in the rear of the property. So, it's pretty much in kind. It's almost the same square footage, but like Mr. Norsini said, we don't get credit for the removal of the existing garage in terms of stormwater management requirements. So, we exceeded the 1,500-square-foot limit, which puts us into full stormwater management design, not just volume control. So, we had to meet additional stormwater requirements now with this revised project. And because we still have the same issues, geological conditions and some vertical limitations on our site, we can't really create like pipes to discharge like you would for another project that had the vertical ability to do that. We cannot meet some of the newer requirements that we have to meet, some of the full stormwater management requirements. Like, we're only able to meet the one and the two-year storm peak control requirements, but we can't meet anything above that. So, that's one of the waivers. And the other waiver was detaining the, or the emptying of the facility within a certain period of time. We don't have infiltration, and that's usually the means for meeting that requirement, so we cannot meet those requirements. And again, I'll stress it, those are sort of partial waiver requirements because we are meeting some areas, some parts of those sections. We just can't meet some of them. So, what we've done is we've increased the number of rain barrels since the last time. So, we added two new rain barrels, which is one of the means we were taking to mitigate stormwater management previously. We've added two new ones, so we have four total on the property. And we've also increased the rain garden here substantially to try to meet these requirements. So, I believe it's maybe like three or four times the size that it was when we previously were in front of you. So, that's what, we're here for the waivers, for the three waivers, and I feel like we've done what we could with the limitations that we have on the site. So, we're asking for those waivers.
Could we be very clear on this? If you decided not to do the garage, you wouldn't even be in front of us tonight. Is that true?
That's correct. We would've been fine with the waiver that we received previously, yeah, for the pool project, for just the pool project.
And the new garage replacement isn't increasing impervious?
Yeah, it's, it's in, you mean from the last time or just in, like garage to garage?
The new garage essentially is the same size as the old garage.
The new garage is essentially the same. It's a slight increase, yeah. But, it's pretty much the same.
So, the net result of this project will be to improve the existing conditions?
Yeah. Well, if you consider that the existing conditions, there's no stormwater management for this existing detached garage, then adding two rain barrels on it, which probably will mitigate, I don't know, if they're in good use, if they're used by the applicant, could mitigate 75, 80% of the average, you know, rainfall in a year, yeah.
But, you also said you cannot meet the two-year storm requirement.
The peak control?
Peak control.
Peak control?
Peak control.
The two, we did meet, yeah. So, five and above.
Five and above.
Five and above, we cannot meet.
So, five-year storm, you can't meet the containment on the...
The peak control, yeah.
The peak control.
Yeah.
So, that's going to exacerbate flooding conditions in Wayne.
I guess in theory it would, yeah.
So, Commissioner Larkin can continue to say it's an improvement. It's certainly an improvement with respect to biological oxygen demand and stormwater purity. But, the issue that this board deals with repeatedly is flooding, and we're being asked to expend great deals of money to address, millions of dollars to address flooding in Wayne. This seems to be making it worse. Can I hear about the garage? What size garage is it and why exactly? I know it's old and it needs to be replaced. Is it going from two cars to three cars? What's really happening? Can I get a little bit more background on the garage?
It's three currently, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. Marita Finley is here, the homeowner. I believe it's a three-car garage, and it's staying a three-car garage, yeah.
Excuse me. It is, at this time, it's, thank you, sorry.
No problem.
It's, it was, it's about, say, two and a half now. So, it's really like a two. What we're trying to do is increase it to three-car and move it over so that when we drive up our driveway now, we don't look at the car wash or the future Wawa maybe, but we'll look at our garage. So, that's why we'd like to move it over from here, which is, you know, mostly on grass, and move it over a good bit so that it's covering now part of the driveway over here and just is what you drive, you know, drive up to on our property.
So, where is the Wawa in the back there? Where would it be? Where's your Wawa properties?
Directly behind my property.
Is that the BP one, or is it right in the middle, or where?
Well, the BP, well, we're, the BP right now. Well, the, well, we're, we're, the BP right now, so it's the car wash is directly behind my property right now.
Are there any other questions? Okay. May I get a motion to approve the waiver 20, waiver of section 2245-22A to C2, C2, section 245-24A and section 245-25A, A, B of the Stormwater Management Ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we seem to have had a comment, is there any additional commissioner comment on this? Is there any staff comment? Any public comment to the motion on the floor?
Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Damian Underley, I live at 300 Midland, across the street from the Finleys, and I'm just a resident of the Third Ward for many years, and a number of those garages back there are dilapidated, falling down, that back up to the Wawa there. I'm just here to voice my support for the renovation and addition there, being a neighbor.
Thank you very much. Any other, any other comment? All right, I will call the vote, all those in favor of granting the waivers requested, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes five to one. Item D.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for being here. Item D, 112 Harvard Lane, waiver of section 245-22A to C2 of the Stormwater Management Ordinance. Mr. Norcini, or do you want to just?
I'll just turn it right over to Mr. Lambert, he's ready to go.
All right, good evening, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Rob Lambert here on behalf of the applicant. This property, I think you've seen a couple of the other ones on Harvard Lane, the properties between Harvard Lane and then there's a creek and then Burnmore Avenue have high groundwater, and so we have groundwater within 24 inches of the surface, and so what this plan proposes to do is to build a rain garden in the back portion of the property, and you can see there's a substantial size to the rain garden to provide all the rate control and also water quality. What we can't provide is the infiltration, and that's why we're here for the waiver tonight. We do have a whole rain garden designed for both the rate and water quality.
Is this part, John, is this part of the development, that new development? Is this one, is this the existing home?
Several others.
Several others, is this one of the new ones, or is this the existing home that's there? New one, okay. All right, first, you know what, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the waivers for 112 Harvard Lane?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Now, any commissioner comment to the motion on the floor?
Again, we really need as a board to stop with the schizophrenic stormwater policies. If you don't want to enforce stormwater, or if you want to enforce it selectively, let everybody get a waiver. This is so ridiculous to have an infiltration requirement and to waive it every single time. This detracts from a stormwater prob, it increases the stormwater problem we have in Wayne of flooding and all over the township. It's ridiculous, it should not be an administrative approval, it has to be a board of commissioners' approval, but this board is not serious about addressing our stormwater problem, not serious about it, just wants to collect more rain tax, tax, tax the peasants and we'll pay, we'll build more basins, and we'll approve everybody that comes before us. It's bad policy, and again, this board is in dereliction of its duty to preserve and enforce our laws.
Thank you, Commissioner Booker.
Quite welcome.
Did you have any specific questions to the motion that we have? Any other commissioners with a comment on the motion on the floor?
I have a question. How far is a rain garden from the house, the shortest distance?
Let's see, I don't have a scale, but give me one second. It's about 20 feet from the back of the house.
Okay, what, that little, I can't read it, it's blurred out, that little rectangle?
There's a deck right here.
Yeah, so that's a deck?
Yeah. And so it's, this is at a lower, this is almost, this is below the basement level, the way the grading works, the deck is much higher than where that is.
I mean, just, again, the whole thing with the rain gardens for me is, I think that's awfully close to the house, to the point where in the summer, or even now, you'll see, you'll see mosquitoes, and I mean, it really is, it really is a health issue. And I mean, I was at Clemecron Park, or last weekend, I saw, and I know it rained a couple days ago, and there's still water, that I saw ducks, geese flying there, and I'm not saying that.
I'm not sure what that design is.
That it would be kept or not, but these things, if they have a habit of not being kept up, I just think that it's.
These are designed with an underdrain, and so what it's designed to do is that the water's gonna seep through the soil, but since we don't have any infiltration, is actually there's an underdrain system that over time, you know, the water's gonna seep through the soil, hit the underdrain and be able to trickle out.
So I guess my question is, what is that overtime period, could that, now, I don't know how quickly mosquitoes breed, or?
It's hours or days though, right? I mean, those, if it's a big rain, you could have a foot or two of water in there for a day or two, right?
Not, no, it shouldn't stay for days, it might be a, you know, 24 to 48 hours, I'm not sure the exact one on this one, but it's usually, it's 24 to 48 hours.
Yeah, a day or two, right.
All right, I mean, that's just my, I mean, I take this as a fairly big health concern, so.
Okay, any other commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment to the motion on the floor? Any public comment? I'm sorry, Sarah's gonna come up and speak. Thank you, Sarah.
Sean, Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. The rain gardens at Clemecron are wrong, they're affectionately called ponds one, two, three, and four. I will remind you that when we did the ren garden up at the front, we dug, excavated, thanks to Steve Norcini, 10 feet, and it had an underground tube, and it drained in about 12 hours. There is no need, if it's done properly, for you to worry about mosquitoes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any additional comment? All right, I will call the vote, all those in favor of granting the waiver of section 245-22A to C2 for 112 Harvard Lane, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes four to two. Moving on to new business, discussion and announcement of May Board of Commissioner, oh, thank you very much, I'm sorry. Discussion and announcement of May Board of Commissioner meeting dates. Mr. Zankowski, do you wanna, are we, do you want me to? All right, so I guess I will take this one. Due to the fact that, and Commissioner Abel brought it up at our last meeting, the planning commission meeting is scheduled for May 6th, we originally had a Board of Commissioners meeting scheduled for May 6th, given that the Wawa discussion is going to be on the Planning Commission agenda for May 6th, and they will definitely need this room, I think, in order to accommodate all those that will want to come out and participate in that, we will cancel our meeting for May 6th, so the Board of Commissioners will not meet on May 6th. We will hold our Special Finance Committee meeting on May 13th, and then meet again as a full board on May 20th, I believe is the following Monday. It'll be, it's definitely a condensed month because of the Memorial Day holiday, and I hope that everyone, and if we need to deal with something, we will be together as a full board on the 13th, so we will have that opportunity if something comes up in, in the interim and we need to deal with it. So, no Board of Commissioners May 6th, Board of Commissioners Finance, May 13th, and Board of Commissioners on May 20th.
Well, thank you for commenting on that, because Wawa draws a crowd, as you've seen, so we appreciate it.
Yes, yes, we wouldn't want everyone to be squished upstairs.
That would not be good.
No, so we will let the Planning Commission do their work and allow plenty of space for the residents to come out and speak. All right, ordinance 115 Animals, section 115-8, review and action. Mr. Zankowski.
Yes, thank you. This is an item that it's always not pleasant to discuss, but regard to the defecation of animals in our parks, not only are they in the parks, they are on trails, they are on streets, they are on neighborhoods. It has gotten bad to where now individuals who are walking with, let's say, their dog, and they pick it up in a bag, they just throw the bag on the ground. And it has been brought to my attention that it's on our trails, Skunkalo, and it's now impacting the waterways of the township. We have those who have their dogs go on the street itself, that washes into the drains in our system. It is getting worse, it's been a problem in the parks for years, it is now getting worse. I know in the neighborhoods, we actually had our police go out and actually had to distribute a emailer, because there were photographs of how bad the lawns were in this neighborhood. It's, it's terrible, and it's only becoming worse, and if, I just guess I don't understand where people can't put, pick it up and put it into a can. We have residents that, when they pick up after their animals, they throw it on the top of the trash can, not in a bag, just throw it on top for our guys to pick that up and dump it out, so. I know we've gotten a lot of complaints from residents, I know, well, the commissioners told me that we have someone that walks now and circles it in the street and says, makes a little chalk notice that says, please pick up your dog, begins with S and ends with T, so they do like to say that, so it is getting worse, so just wanted to let the board know that this is something that we're gonna let our animal control and enforcement start to look at here, because it is, it's gotten out of control. One other item we have gotten complaints on, which is growing, is dogs that are left out that bark all day, continuous, they don't stop, it's a continuous issue, where for eight or nine hours, neighbors have to listen to an animal bark constantly for that long. It's another one that we'll be paying, you know, notice if residents want to email us, call us, you know, feel free to call the police, that's where animal control is based out of, to let us know, but we hope that the cooperation is good on both of these issues. But I know walking up on the Radnor Trail this weekend, I mean, dogs are going on the asphalt and being left there in a pile, so it's beyond, beyond where we're at now, and the problem's getting worse, it's a health issue. I think we've got a good handle on goose droppings, but now we've, we've replaced it with dog droppings, so, I mean, these aren't small ones either, so. This is something I know on the topics of priorities is very low, but it is becoming more and more of a problem, we're hearing from more people that utilize like the Radnor Trail, the parks, and when you look at even Hartford is a dog park, you have very few issues over there, because people clean up and pick up. But again, there's some, some there too, that people off, off the trails or that are allowing animals to go, and it's really impacting a lot of people, and it's a health concern.
Bob, with regard to the barking animals, isn't it important that the police actually get there and hear it themselves?
Absolutely, so if someone calls the police, they can go there, but again, that's another one that seems to be becoming more and more frequent of concerns of not just the dog barks for five minutes, because it wants to go in or do something, this is eight, nine hours straight of a dog barking.
So can you, so on that ordinance, and this is not the anti-dog meeting, we love dogs, no, I do, but on the ordinance, so there, that, for, if they do find, catch somebody who's not cleaning up after the dog, there is a fine with regards to that, yes?
That's correct.
And I know we brought this up, we were down at Skunkalo cleaning up, doing the creek cleanup, and apparently down there, there was just, I mean, an area where people were just tossing their, the bags, I mean, they were picking it up, but then they were just throwing the bags, so it doesn't help to put it in a bag and then just leave it there. But I know we talked about, you had a concern, we wanted, we suggested, should we add another trash can down there, and you said, that's not the best thing, what would be the best thing for people to do, just take it out with you, like, take it with you?
There, when you come out of trails or off trails, there's plenty of waste receptacles around, you can just drop it right in there, it's no problem. That's all we're asking, is that to put it in there, and I agree with you, this is not anti-dog, we love dogs, it's just that when it comes to a point where we're getting photographs from people, that's, I mean, it's just not one or two, it's significant.
Yeah.
And then, like you mentioned about with the creek, it's people who walk there are seeing that, our waterways, and that's becoming a problem.
Yeah, it's common courtesy, I mean, kids are out there on the trails.
So would it be fines, is that what?
There is a fine.
There is a fine, so is it increasing fines, or what's the change that action requested?
I think what we're looking for is just that we are going to, it'll probably start with a warning to someone and saying if this occurs again, that now you will be fined, and it's, I, I'm not sure, I'll get the details for you on whether it's progressive or not.
And another issue that I note is that people, and they're walking through the streets, they will drop, so this is a different issue, but they'll, they'll pick up and they'll have the bag, and then if you have your trash out, it gets, the guys come, they take the trash, and there's an empty can there, and they'll drop it in a can of their neighbors, or maybe not their neighbors. Is, I don't think there's anything on the books that's against that right now, is that, what would that be, that wouldn't be any?
I'm gonna ask the solicitor, Joe.
Maybe, maybe we can add something, I mean, you shouldn't, you shouldn't just drop that into an empty can, because then that person has to take that can and leave it in the garage for the whole week until, or else take care of it themselves, I don't know, you know, what you do, right?
Correct.
So, maybe that's something we could add in there, you know, if we're changing it.
Okay.
Bob, two things, so would more signage help at the parks?
We had plenty of.
With an actual fine saying, you know, you're gonna get fined or not?
I think Tammy may be working on some re-signing that could be incorporated in there, but we have so many signs throughout the township and in the parks, that's, I mean, there, there is an awful lot, you know, I think the possibility of condensing them down to say, here's all, here's the rules.
Okay.
And to try to make people aware of that.
Sure, and then there are a couple issues, I've seen the sign that says a dog must be controlled, I think control is subject to interpretation, and so I, you know, not say that, I think the dog should be leashed, in some areas they should be leashed, maybe if you go to Hartford Park or any designated off-leash dog park, but to say controlled, it's, controlled is up to the owner, and if the police are called, I'm sure, it's gonna be five, 10 minutes later till they get there, and then they're not gonna be able to see the situation, so I think that, that language, it may not be bad to kind of refine that. And then also for, I appreciate you talking about the, the barking dogs, so if you do make an ordinance, would there be like a time limit? Because what, one person would say, hey, I let my dog out, takes him 10 minutes to do his business, and he comes back in, so I guess what, you know, could we put a metric on what is considered excessive or not? We all know eight hours is excessive, or five hours, or, but then it gets to that gray area, well, he doesn't bark that much, so I don't know if that's something that you and John would look at, or just kind of?
We can do that, what we've done in the past, and what we have been doing, is the police will go and knock on the door, and a lot of times people aren't aware that it's a nuisance, but again, a lot of people aren't home, the dog is out, so then the police will return and advise that, here's a problem, but if we don't know what's going on, like in a dresser, when it's taking place, I think like Commissioner Nagle said, you gotta let us know, so if it's, if it's something that's taking place, they can email, they can call, dial 911, again, it's something that they can respond to, they know exactly, and then talk to the homeowner, because most of the residents will comply.
Thanks.
Okay, you'll keep us up to date on how things are going, and if you still need, I know a lot of us have newsletters, if you could send it, I know Luke has sent stuff out, and I have sent stuff out, so if you wanna let your neighbors know, be courteous.
We can do that, and again, most people are, thank you.
And publicly shame them if they don't comply.
All right, any other new business? Any old business?
Old business. Number one, I would like to bring a discussion of the elimination of section 245 of the Stormwater Management Ordinance for consideration to this board, so we don't have these waivers and arguments every single time, I'm tired of making it, and, so why don't, if this board will entertain a discussion, I would like to have that on a future agenda, but if you're not, then just say, no, we don't want to discuss it, we're gonna leave it just like it is, and waive everyone. So tell me right now, if you, if you want, I think we should discuss it, but if you don't want to, then just say, we don't want to do that, and I'll leave it go.
But Rich, I think the better question is, how many, what percentage of these grading apps that come in, or whatever they may be, qualify for waivers? Because yes, we always waive it when it comes up for a waiver, but it's not like every application that comes in is seeking a waiver, that's the point.
If it's 5% or 2% or 50%, it doesn't matter to me, so, but I, I would say, if we're gonna, if we're gonna give it to 2% or 5% of the people, let's give it to everybody. I don't, I don't want to favor, just because where they happen to buy or where they happen to live, let's give it to everybody. Let's give it to everybody. But, but again, if, let's discuss that. If this board wants to do that, if this board does not want to do it, then just say, no, we don't want to discuss it, and I'll leave it be. If you could get a sense of the board, Lisa.
Well, I think we should change it so that staff can approve them and don't bring them to the commissioners.
Agreed.
My recollection is that there's a statutory issue with it.
Yeah, you can't do that, and that would be horrible.
Could we actually just eliminate the requirement altogether? Would that be permitted?
No, I would, I think what John's, and you've talked about delegating this to Township Engineer or the staff, because even though they're not meeting the technical requirements, whether it's infiltration, they still are doing some mitigation on their lots, rain barrels. So you don't want to just eliminate it. You want, I think, the staff to look at what the mitigation is, even though they can't meet the strict requirements of the ordinance, there's rain barrels, and Steve ought to be able to do that, so it doesn't come to the board. So I guess what you would have to do is make an amendment to the Stormwater Ordinance, leave those requirements in there, but leave it up to the Township Engineer to grant or not grant the waiver. And then maybe it comes to the board. If he denies it and they still want to come to the board, comes to the board. That'll, that'll knock out probably 95% of the.
Well, John, why don't we just delegate the whole approval process to the staff and never, and never have it come to us? It'd be much easier, then we wouldn't have to look at any of these things.
No, Rich, you're misrepresenting what the code says.
Not misrepresenting it.
Yes, you are.
But anyway, but this is not the issue. The issue is, should we discuss this at an upcoming meeting? That's the question.
I, it doesn't seem like the appetite's there to eliminate that section of the Stormwater Ordinance. It doesn't seem like it.
I think though, it's good to, I think it would be good to have the conversation and better understand it, because one of the things that I feel like we're seeing this coming to us more often, you know, is it because of the high water table right now? I mean, someone have suggested that, that places just, you know, things just aren't perking right now. You know, so I think it's good to understand that, and maybe it's in a broader context. I don't think that we should necessarily eliminate it, but is there anyone else who?
Could you add this topic at the Stormwater meeting? When we have a special Stormwater meeting?
We don't have a quorum for Stormwater Committee right?
No, 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 no. When we have, don't we have a special meeting based on Stormwater?
Yeah, but that's going to be to talk about the finances and projects.
Could we, could we add this to it?
I don't think we want to get into an ordinance discussion in that, in that setting.
It's a different place.
So I think we can put that, we can have that discussion. Is there anyone that objects to having the discussion and perhaps the direction that, you know, Mr. Nagel talked about? And, you know, I don't know if we think better of it, we want to, I don't know, but I don't think it's a bad idea to have the discussion. Is there anyone who objects? Okay. So Mr. Zankowski, can we put that on as a future discussion item?
Okay. And the second old business item is, I want to have a vote on the overheight vehicle detection system for Radnor Chester Road, I'm sorry, for King of Pressure Road at the King of Pressure Bridge. So on both sides of King of Pressure Bridge, I want that to be before the board for a formal vote. We've been installing massive, massive signs and massive numbers. I want this board to consider a overheight electronic eye, overheight vehicle detection system for King of Pressure Road for the bridge and have this vote, this board vote on it. That's my request to have a vote. So if we could have that for the next meeting, that would be good.
Aren't we working with PennDOT on that?
Yeah, I thought PennDOT was working on that.
Are we waiting for that to move its way through the?
No, PennDOT, PennDOT's not going to put in any overheight vehicle detection, even if they will, even if they will.
Don't they have to permit it?
Even if they will, this vote is for this board, this board to do it. Okay? That's, even if PennDOT, and they've said that they don't put it up. I've talked to the folks and they won't put it up. But even if we're working on it, and they might in the future, I'm not, that's not the issue. The issue, the question is, what I want on the agenda is for us to vote on whether we will approve it with this township and direct our staff to put it in. Like any other, like any other traffic light or any other traffic device.
Do we even have that authority?
We'd have to get PennDOT to consent, I think.
And PennDOT said they will consent.
It's a PennDOT road. They're going to have to approve the system.
PennDOT will consent. I've talked to the folks.
You will have to assume all liability for it.
I'm confused.
No, don't be confused.
We're going to have to brace this out and get paid.
That's what it'll be. It'll be a vote for us to authorize the installation of an electronic, photo eye electronic overheight vehicle detection system to be installed by the township. Township expense, township, well, I guess with any grants, whatever money we could get. But township responsibility.
So what you're, what you're saying is?
And PennDOT would approve it though, yes.
If we, what your, your argument is, if we approve it at our expense, PennDOT won't, PennDOT will grant whatever appro.
Yeah, they won't block it. They won't block it.
There's probably some kind of a permit you're going to have to get from PennDOT.
Okay.
I mean, I would.
So I, I'm not saying, I'm not saying whether this board will vote for it or not. I just wanted to come before the board at the next meeting.
We have that as a discussion? If that's going to be an expenditure of dollars, wouldn't we have that as a discussion as part of the budget?
What's the cost?
Yeah, how much does it cost? I mean, what is it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the cost. I want the concept, I want the concept. The concept, we can, we can put it in next year's budget for all I care.
All right, so.
It's the, it's the concept for the, for a meeting at, at, at our meeting. So that's what I'd like to have, formally requesting it for the next meeting. All you need is one.
Just, just.
I think we're all in favor of the concept.
Rich, if you want it on the agenda, it's going to go on the agenda.
That's, that's what I'm asking for, it to be on the agenda, so if we can have that in minutes.
What's going to be on the agenda? You just want us to vote on whether we're in favor of the concept of avoiding bridge strikes?
No, that we will, the township, that we will install, direct staff to install, an overheight vehicle detection system. Didn't you hear? Did I, I didn't stutter.
Well, maybe not.
Without knowing how much it costs? Are you suggesting, without knowing how much it costs?
Yes, I am. I'm, I'm suggesting we don't need to know the exact cost. It's, it's around $100,000, $200,000. It's, it's, it is some money. We'll find that out when we, when we design it and build it. But yeah, the first, the first thing you need to do is get the concept. And so you can vote against it. I hear you. You don't care about, you don't care about bridge strikes in my area, and you're, right down the street from your house, Jack. But if you want to vote no, vote no against it.
Okay.
I'm not saying, it's, it's a concept that we're going to take, put in a safety device